Education work session to order. Welcome, everybody. If we could all stand, we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Hall in favor? I did that backward. Did y'all notice? Okay, appreciate it. Okay, presentation and discussion items. First, we have elementary math vision with Leigh Anne Rice. You're first. That means that you get to leave after that. So that's good. It's a good thing to be first.
Rising sixth grade night at South.
Oh, okay.
Well, and you're all the hype in the LSEs that I've been to. So they're all excited about math.
Well, that is a perfect segue. And before I turn this over, Brian, I just...
Leigh Anne, will you turn the mic on for us? I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, thank you. That is different.
He does it to me all the time.
Before I turn this over to Dr. Lack, I do want to express how grateful we are in the TNL Department that you all support us with content specialists. We have nine content specialists that support our teachers and leaders in our core academic areas, so mathematics, ELA, science, social studies, world language, and the fine arts. Brian is an example of one of those content specialists. And the work that they do to support our teachers and to make sure that we have, that they have what they need to support our students in their endeavors is just amazing. And you're going to hear in a few minutes about the vision that Brian and his team have established for elementary mathematics and Forsyth County Schools. And I just need to share with you what a testament is to the level of work that these people are doing in my department. We have the Forsyth County Schools leader profile. Several tenants of that talk about especially relationships and communication. We all know those are the cornerstones of the work that we do. But what Brian does that really sets this apart is he focuses on the intentionality. And I want you to listen to that tonight as he's going through this. The intention in which he has developed leaders, teacher leaders that have supported him in creating this vision, and the way that he embraces innovation. Our mathematics world and the world that our children are growing into is ever evolving. And he is one that really looks ahead. He is sought by our state Department of Education, by other districts for his expertise and his creativity. And we are just very blessed to have him in Forsyth County Schools. So with that, I am going to let Brian explain to you what we are doing in Forsyth County with mathematics. It's very exciting.
Thank you, Anne. She always gives the best introductions. I thrive under the leadership of leaders who set high expectations, and Leigh Anne does that better than anybody. So without further ado, we're going to dive right into this vision. So I would like to begin by asking you to look at this picture of a classroom from about 1906 and think of one word that comes to your mind. Got it? How about conformity, compliance, obedience, discipline? Now, these are some of the features that we would traditionally call traditional teaching practices. And for math, what that's looked like over time is a disproportionate emphasis on memorization of facts and procedures. Speaking of memorization, this is Nigel Richards, who is not French, but he won a national French Scrabble tournament, yet he doesn't even speak French. How did he do it? He memorized the entire French dictionary in under nine weeks. And the reason I start with this story is because sometimes this is how math is taught. Disproportionate emphasis on memorization and repetition without application and understanding. Now, we know that the goals of education are heavily influenced by social, cultural, economic factors, right? And if we look at the most valued workplace skills according to Fortune 500 over the last 50 years in 1970, and then we look at the most valued workplace skills again in 1999, we see an interesting shift occurred. The ranking of computational skills and problem-solving ability inverted. And today, thanks to calculators, AI, automation, it's not computational skills that we're looking for in workers as much as we're looking for complex problem solving, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration. And so you can easily argue that what employers are looking for today is problem solvers. And so that's at the heart of the FCS learner profile. It's at the heart of the new strategic plan, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics' Effective Teaching Practices, as well as the Georgia Department of Education's Mathematical Practices and their new mathematical modeling framework and statistical reasoning framework, all fundamental parts of the new standards set out to roll out in the fall. These six documents played a critical role in the development of our vision. To sum it all up, we believe that math is best learned through problem solving because problem solving leads to sense-making and understanding rather than simply memorizing and mimicking. Now, a question you might have is what do we mean by problem solving here? Are we talking about word problems? Not exactly. So a problem is defined as any task or activity for which students have no prescribed or memorized rules or methods, nor is there perception by students that there is a specific correct solution method. Now, the shift here we're talking about is treating problem solving as a creative process led by students, not necessarily a prescriptive one always led by the teacher. Because when we take a math problem and we immediately show students how to solve it, we're basically engaging them in an exercise of re-urgitation and repetition or rehearsal with no true thinking required. So let's look at an example together. How many unique ways can the letters in the word Mississippi be arranged? Would you guys consider this to be a problem based on the definition we just looked at? For some of you, yes. For me, at one time, this was a problem. I did not know how to solve this. But then I learned a formula to be able to solve a problem like this in about five seconds. All right? And so it's no longer a problem for me. So pedagogically, let's assume the role of a teacher for a minute, okay? I have two options essentially. If my goal is to teach students how to solve this permutation-type problem, I have two choices. Approach number one, we will call "I do, we do, you do." And this is what it's going to look like. I'll begin my instruction by giving you this problem. Before you get a chance to even think about it, I will show you a formula that you can use to solve the problem, wherein is the number of letters in the word, and the denominator here in this fraction is the product of the factorials of the occurrences of the repeated letters. Got it? Sure, right? If you've got it or not, it doesn't matter because the point with this approach is not to understand why the formula works. It's simply to plug in the numbers, crunch those numbers either by hand or with a calculator, and then do multiple problems like this so we can plow through the curriculum and move on to the next topic and get ready for the state test. Now, we're going to, in this case, essentially what I'm doing is I'm treating you as a passive learner so that I can move very quickly, okay? Now, let's juxtapose that with a different approach. Approach number two, which I'm going to call "you do, we do, I do," where I treat you as an active learner. By first letting you solve this problem, a much simpler problem than the Mississippi problem, and that's intentional because I want you to use your prior knowledge and your intuition to experiment, wrestle with the problem. Maybe you're going to get stuck. You'll collaborate with peers. You'll use knowledge in novel ways, and maybe you'll get unstuck. And maybe you won't solve it, and that's okay. This doesn't mean that I'm just going to throw you to the wolves and you're responsible for figuring this out on your own. You're probably going to try some heuristics, like some guess-and-check. And through that process, I'll ask you intentional questions. I will purposefully guide you, your thinking, to push it forward. And then and only then, whether you solve the problem or not, we'll introduce the formula and we'll derive it from that sense-making process that you went through as a problem solver. In other words, I'll treat you as a mathematician. So the research is clear. Student learning in mathematics is more robust if students first have a chance to grapple with a problem before hearing explicit instruction on it. Now, both components and the order in which they happen are important. I want to be very clear, I am not saying explicit instruction has no place in the classroom. It's just the order in which that happens. Because, again, when we immediately show students how to solve a problem without letting them grapple with it, they become mathematical mimickers. And we don't want to create mathematical mimickers. We want to create thinkers and problem solvers. So either way, with this problem type, when facing a more difficult problem like this, how many unique ways can the letters in the word Mississippi be arranged now if the caveat is all four S's must be adjacent to one another? If you learned under approach number one, that surface-level approach, you might say, "Oh, you know what? I learned a formula for this. It goes something like this. I plug in the numbers and I get the answer and, oh, no. The formula doesn't work anymore. I thought by learning the formula that I'd be a good problem solver." Well, we know that, like, real problems, whether in life or in school, usually involve a few wrinkles, right? Where we have to apply novel understanding. And if we've only been taught surface-level formulas without understanding, or we try to Google the solution, that doesn't serve us well, doesn't help our problem-solving skills. So if you learn in the deep conceptual way of approach number two, where you grapple with problems first, you are much better to figure this, able to figure this problem out because you probably understand how the formula connects to the problem. And this is what Hattie Fisher and Frye call "learning transfer," which is really the goal of education. We want students to be able to apply what they've learned in school to novel situations and contexts. The deep conceptual learning of approach number two better positions students for this type of learning transfer than the surface-level approach of number one. So in short, as one of my heroes, Peter Lilidahl, says, "Problem solving is what we do when we don't know what to do." And so before we dive into the vision, I have a question that I share with teachers. Three questions. I ask them this. When you give your students a problem that they don't know how to solve, how many of you have students who give up really quickly, within like, you know, seconds? And a lot of teachers raise their hand. Then I'll say, "How many of you have students that really don't even try? They just seek help immediately, whether from the teacher or a peer?" Get a lot of hands on that one, too. But I get a ton of hands on this one. Do you get students who don't even look at the problem? And they shut down immediately and say, "I can't do this. I'm not a math person." So all of these behaviors are not going to serve students well in the long run, right? Especially if we go back to what employers are looking for and just to be successful in life. If we can't think about problems and wrestle with them and be creative and critical thinkers, we're in trouble because most problems we face in life and in the workforce aren't ones that we can simply Google or look up a formula to figure out and probably weren't taught to us in textbooks and schools. So with that, we're going to dive into the vision. This is the vision for elementary math. And I do have some handouts I can share with you. There's a lot of words on the screen. So one of the things that we've done is we have distilled this down to a more palatable version based on four tenants. And I'm going to share those tenants with you now. But first, the overarching goal is this. In Forsyth County Schools, we aim to develop students who are mathematically proficient in 21st century skills. Not 20th century, not the 1906 classroom we saw on the first slide, who are able to apply mathematical reasoning in an ever-changing world. And tenant number one is this: mathematics is joyful and rigorous. In order for us to realize this, teachers have to believe that all students, no matter what their backgrounds are, are capable of doing interesting, challenging, rigorous mathematics. Now, I'm going to talk about joyful learning and do a little bit of a sidebar. When I was in fifth grade, I started taking piano lessons. I loved the Beatles, Paul McCartney, and I really wanted to play that type of music. I had a teacher who was very strict on the classics. It was repetitive drills and scales every day. And I know a lot of that was probably good for me, but I needed occasional time to just go off-script, maybe hit a few notes and be like, "What sound will this make?" And when I did that, I would get reprimanded. It's like the teacher only cared about, you know, his curriculum, his pacing guide, his weekly tests, and there was no room or space for me to just wander and wander. And so I think that was ultimately what led to my lack of affinity for piano. I believed I would never be any good, and so I quit. I didn't have that time and space for wondering and wandering. And there's an excellent book by Sue Nilsing and Chris Brownell called "Math Recession." And the whole premise is this: math and children need time and space. Time for wondering and space for wandering. And this approach fits perfectly with a vision that values thinking and problem solving over mimicking and memorizing. I'm sure every one of us has heard a child, or maybe even an adult, say these words: "I hate math." I believe one reason why students and adults hate math is because we tend to treat the subject like a set of recipes and rules to memorize and follow and imitate and not necessarily understand. I can say this as a chef in my kitchen, I'm a recipe follower. And when I don't have an ingredient, I don't really understand what to do to substitute. There's often no room for curiosity and play in math class, or what we call sometimes inviting students to bring their own backgrounds and interest to the mathematics. What does joyful math look like? I think it looks like this. This is collaborative, hands-on Forsyth County students engaged in inquiry-based investigations where they're testing out ideas. And unlike the photo from 1906, they're discussing them together and they're conjecturing about the best way to build a figure with the fewest or the least amount of shapes possible. This is what joyful math looks like. Look at this picture. This is from summer school last year. Two kids having the time of their life playing a simple strategy-based game on a black-and-white sheet of paper. You see, kids get excited about explorations, games, puzzles, low-floor, high-ceiling tasks that involve thinking and strategy. These are the characteristics of joyful math. This right here is a counting-walking maze that I used at every one of my family math nights at the elementary schools this week, this year. It looks deceptively simple, but actually what makes it interesting and fun and joyful is that it's not simple. It requires you to make mistakes and start over and be strategic and actually think. And that's what kids like about it. One night at one of our family math nights, and I actually saw this a couple of occasions, there was a dad who walked his student, his son, through every single step without even letting him try. And I know it came from, you know, the best of intentions. But at the end, he went to fist bump his son and said, "Hey, buddy, you know, we did it. Great job." And his son said, "No, I didn't, Dad. You did it for me." He was genuinely upset. And I think sometimes as teachers and parents, we become a little bit obsessed with getting kids through math problems without struggle smoothly, efficiently to the right answer and not understanding that there's joy in math through thinking, playing, sometimes struggling and making mistakes. And, you know, just like we do with puzzles. And this leads to the second and third tenants of the vision. In our classrooms, we believe that students should do the thinking. And in order for that to happen, teachers must promote reasoning and problem solving through the use of rich math tasks that invite thinking. And related to that is tenant number three. We believe that students should do more of the talking in math class. There's a saying, whoever's doing the talking is doing the learning. But John Hattie's research shows that teacher talk today still accounts for approximately 80% of all classroom talk. That's staggering. In order to invert this ratio, we believe that teachers must position students as investigative thinkers, pattern seekers, and authors of their own learning. To demonstrate and synthesize these three tenants so far, I'm going to put you guys on the hot seat with a math task. How about that? All right.
I'll be back in a minute.
Anybody who knows me knows that you're going to do some math when I present. All right. All right, so here we go. We've got a tug-of-war, and on one side, we have four acrobats, each of equal strength. And on the other side, we have five grandmas, each of equal strength. And the result in round one is a draw. In round two, we have a dog named Ivan, and he's pitted up against two grandmas and one acrobat. And again, it results in a draw. But in the final round, Ivan and three of the grandmas are on one side, and the four acrobats are on the other. So I'm going to give you 60 seconds of quiet thinking time to decide who will win the third round. And I want you to use mathematical reasoning. And after 60 seconds, I'll let you talk and share your thinking with your elbow partners. All right, let me tell you what I tell all the teachers that I work with and all the teachers I presented this vision to. I honestly don't care if you got a solution. And if you did get a solution, I honestly don't care if it's incorrect or correct. But what I do care about is that you have something to offer to your partner that you're going to share with, something you noticed, something you questioned, just anything that went through your mind. So I'm just going to give you a minute or two to share with each other. And I don't know if you want to turn your mics off or if you want to leave those on. I'll leave that up to you.
I got five G's, or the three G's and the one dog.
Or stronger.
Yeah.
Because Ivan, the dog is...
Equals two G's and one A.
Yes.
Bam!
That's what I thought. I don't know if it's right or not, but he's stronger than two grandmas and an acrobat. Ivan is. To the three grandmas, you add two grandmas and an acrobat to the, I mean, for Ivan is that strong, then that has to be stronger, right? Or wrong?
Stronger than four.
Tell us.
Wait a minute, I want to hear from Mr....
Yeah, you know, I can't tell you. I'm going to let you guys decide if it's right or wrong, but yeah.
The grandmas win, guys. I hate to do that.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
The way I did it, I just said equal, both sides equal 100, right? So grandma's worth 20.
All right, one second. I knew you were going to say this because you've sat through my presentations. So I'm going to illustrate what he's saying visually if you want to follow along.
Yeah. So I just, I said each side, sure, equals 100, right? So that means each man is worth 25 and each grandma's worth 20, right? So two grandmas and a guy is, what is that? 20, 20, 25 is 65, so the dog's worth 65. So the dog plus three grandmas is 105, four guys 20.
That's what we said.
Basically, yeah, basically what you guys said.
I didn't do numbers.
Didn't get to it quite that way, but that's okay, right?
Okay, yeah, so you use numbers. That was one way. Now, I'm going to have somebody just re-articulate. I've actually added this because I expected someone to maybe come up with this solution, too. So start back with what you said in round two. You said, "I know that a dog is the same strength as two grandmas and an acrobat." Keep going.
Well, I think Darla had the same, too.
Okay.
So if you have one dog, you have five grandmas and one acrobat versus four acrobats.
Okay, so if we substitute those two grandmas and an acrobat for that dog?
Yes.
Is that kind of what you're saying? Now we have five grandmas and an acrobat?
Yes.
Which is clearly stronger than four acrobats. How do you know that, though?
Because four acrobats is the same as five grandmas. So you have five grandmas plus an acrobat.
From round one. See, you were the shining star here.
That's how, yeah, I didn't think. That's how I figured it out, too, not with the numbers. The numbers seem more simple, but...
That seems harder.
Yeah, so basically, as a teacher, I could have made this learning experience much worse for you. And here's how I could have done that, by using an "I do, we do, you do" approach. I could have eliminated the context of tug-of-war and said, "Today, we're going to learn a process of substitution with algebra. I'll give you two equations with three variables. I'll show you how to substitute, so you name one variable in terms of another, and then we will practice this over and over again." And then when I see that some of you got this down, I'll move you to an enrichment group where I'll let you go on and solve interesting, rigorous math problems like the one we just solved. But if you don't get this process of substitution algebraically, you might stay in my group for a little bit longer, and in fact, you might never leave my group, which means you won't have the opportunity to solve challenging, interesting math problems like this because you'll be stuck in a low-ability group doing low-level, boring, decontextualized math. Now, this is what a solution could look like algebraically. Technically, this is a grade-eight math problem. If I tie it to systems of linear equations. However, I tried this with a fourth-grader year a few years ago, and this is what she said, essentially, Mike's strategy. She said, "I know 5 times 4 is 4 times 5." So she made the grandmas and the acrobats 5 and 4, and then substituted the values, just like we saw with the other strategy, and reasoned that the grandmas and the dog would win as well. However, we would never know this if we didn't give students a chance to grapple with the problem first before we apply the explicit instruction. And so I can easily advance your thinking and the student thinking and connect it to that abstract algebra process of substitution if I allow you to engage in this problem-solving strategy first. So Alyssa Pieniewski, in her book Architects of Deeper Learning, has this to say. While an "I do, we do, you do" approach, sometimes called "the gradual release of responsibility," may be advocated for some disciplines like reading, it has not been shown to be effective for developing mathematical proficiency that includes the development of, one, thinking skills, and, two, the ability to tackle problems that may not fit a particular format: thinking and problem solving. On the other hand, we see growing consensus in support of a teaching model that involves students productively struggling on engaging tasks and discussing their work as a vehicle for deep, lasting, and usable learning. So the big question is this: when we move from an "I do, we do, you do" approach to a "you do, we do, I do" approach, what shifts in practices will this necessitate for teachers? Well, the biggest is moving away from front-loading instruction by showing and telling so much to facilitating student thinking through that problem-solving process. And we believe that by making that shift, teachers will do less of the talking and more listening to student thinking and doing what I was doing with you, kind of orchestrating a discussion very purposefully and intentionally, and then providing that explicit instruction. Students are also going to go through a little bit of shift, especially if they're used to sitting in classrooms and listening passively and mimicking. Now, we're going to be asking them to do more thinking. We're also going to ask, because the teacher's going to do more, if they were listening in a traditional setting, now we're asking them to do more talking in math class. And I want to be clear here, they are still going to be listening to the teacher, but they're going to be listening to their peers just as much. And the learning is actually more robust in those social types of settings. I do want to address one misconception. Some may believe that this shift will leave struggling students behind. And to counter that, I want you to consider this: struggling readers are not necessarily struggling thinkers, right? Struggling readers can think at their age and grade level, even if they can't necessarily decode text at grade level. Similarly, students who struggle with basic math facts or procedures, that doesn't mean that they can't think. They might need a little bit more scaffolding. But at the end of the day, all students deserve a chance to be thinkers and problem solvers, even if they need that additional explicit instruction. And bottom line is math needs to make sense to everyone. And to help math make sense to everyone, we have tenant number four, our final tenant. Students must connect and represent the hows and the whys of math. And teachers are going to do this by helping students not only memorize rules and procedures, et cetera, but understand those rules, procedures, patterns, and structures. And to illustrate this, I am going to give you one little last fun math task. I want you all to pick a secret number 1 through 7, a whole number. And if you want to write it down or put it in a calculator on your phone, that's fine, but just don't share it with anybody. Okay, step number two, I want you to multiply your secret number by 3. Now, I want you to take the number you have now in your calculator in your head or whatever, multiply it by itself. Okay, now add the digits... Okay, now add the digits together for whatever you have. So if your number right now is fifty-eight, add the five and the eight. Now subtract five. And I want you to assign the number you have a corresponding letter in the alphabet. So if your number's one, your letter's A. Two is B, three is C, and so forth. Hopefully, you don't have a number bigger than twenty-six, or you're gonna have to find a different alphabet to use. You ready? All right. Now, I want you to think of a state in the United States that begins with your letter. I'll let you think about it for a second before I give you a scaffold. Okay. And the final step is take the second letter in the state that you chose and think of an animal that begins with that letter. And then you can turn to someone sitting next to you and share your state and animal, unless you got Delaware and elephants. What? Really? Is anybody curious, like, how and why that worked? Yeah, so, listen, I could have played, I played this trick on you to illustrate a point. Pretend I just multiplied two two-digit numbers, uh, using this Chinese stick algorithm that went viral on social media years ago, without exploring why it works. Um, when we teach rules and procedures without connections and concepts, like, understanding why they work, math can begin to feel mysterious, almost like magic. And when math gets harder, mystery turns to frustration. And when it gets even harder, frustration turns into labeling ourselves, "I'm not a math person." So, let's, uh, unpack how and why that trick worked. Can you show me with your hands the secret number that you guys all chose? Okay, so we have, we have, we have proof that you did not choose necessarily the same. Okay, so you could've chosen any number one through seven, algebraically, we'll call it N. Visually, we'll represent that secret number as a red stick. In the next step, I asked you to multiply your secret number by three. So now you all have a multiple three, or three times your secret number. Visually, you have three copies of the red stick. The next step, I asked you to take the number you have, multiply it by itself. We call that squaring the number, because three times three is nine, and N times N is N squared. And visually, instead of having a row of three sticks, we now have a three-by-three array, which, uh, is a square that has nine parts. Then I said, "Add the digits together." See what happened? No matter what you started with, now you all have nine. And then I forced you to subtract five, because there's only one state in the US that starts with a D, forcing you to pick Delaware. Now, elephants was just a brain game. You could've picked some other animals.
I was thinking eel, and I thought, wait, that's fish.
So, um, yeah, that trick was played on me by a statistics professor in graduate school, and I immediately had to figure out, "How did that work?" Um, so again, it's about making sense of the math and making sure that we understand what we're doing to avoid, um, labeling ourselves as not being math people. Um, so there you have it, the vision for teaching and learning with ma- in mathematics, learning that is student-led and teacher-facilitated. Um, I'll leave you with a quote, um, that was shared with us by Sean Kavanaugh. He says, "When a flower doesn't bloom, you fix the environment in which it grows, not the flower." And the translation in the classroom is, "If a child can't learn the way we teach, maybe we should teach the way they learn." I conclude this presentation by asking teachers to fold their arms, cross their arms in a way that's comfortable to them, and you can do it if you want to as well. And then I asked them to switch that orientation, um, the other way around, which is really hard for me. Um, and I asked them how it feels. And a lot of teachers say uncomfortable. Some say, "I'm good with it." And I say, "Well, the process of change usually does involve discomfort." It's gonna be varying degrees of discomfort for some teachers over others. The way that we're gonna support that discomfort is by, um, embracing the vision. That discomfort will eventually go away. And things that we're doing to help with that, we are currently mapping out, uh, new, the units of instruction. We have adopted a curriculum. We're doing training on that here soon. Um, district professional learning days will be full days of math training, uh, on the new standards, the vision, the curriculum, and also unit planning. And then we're pouring a lot of capacity into our school-based coaches to engage in job-embedded coaching next year. That concludes the presentation. I wanna personally thank Mike for sitting through this presentation now for the third time and being such an-
Yeah. No wonder he knew all the answers.
And actually, he, he knew it right away on that first time, so, uh, I thank you for being an enthusiastic supporter of the vision. I'd also like to thank Dr. Boarden, uh, Dr. Beard and the, and the board, um, for allowing me to take thirty minutes today. I know that's an exception, and I really, truly appreciate that. I'm just lucky to live and work in this, uh, school system, so thank you very much.
That was fun.
I, I'll only sum up one word, amen. You're preaching to the choir. This is probably the reason I'm sitting in this chair, is the math. Um, having taken five-quarters of calculus at Tech, I've got a whole toolbox of wrenches. I don't know what to use them on. And that's the same thing that I relearned when I went back to Tech, to take some more courses to get to linear algebra, 'cause I really wanted to solve problems with that, that type of math. I talked to the dean of computer science about what they were doing in their computer science program, very much the same thing about problem solving. He said they're trying to get them to think different. And I said, "I'm thinking a whole lot different these days, because I've actually had to get out and solve my problem." And I came to the same conclusions that you put very eloquently in, in writing, which is something I've tried to put my ha- arms around my whole career, and, and even in life problems. And I think that's why I've come to volunteer with First Robotics. I've spent the last five weeks watching these kids solve a problem that they were given in January with a two-hundred-pound robot and complex electronics, mathematics, all components of a business. And they solved it. And I get excited when I see that happening. And when we roll this out, the one thing that we have to also keep in mind is that marketing to the, the community. Mom and dad don't get it. They, I go back to my days of teaching my son's math and math magic, 'cause that's what I learned it as, is magic, even though I thought it was pretty cool. A lot of parents say, "That's not how Jesus learned math." And so we have to break that mold to understand this isn't just another curriculum. This is actually the way you're going, going to learn. Like you saw, we all saw, solved it differently. And for us, that's our IEP, right? We all have an individual plan, an individual way our minds are wired. And we came up with the same conclusion, but different ways. And so I appreciate everything that you put in that presentation, so it was worth thirty minutes.
Well, thank you. That's very affirming. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I just wanted briefly, just, that was great. I mean, great presentation. I, I hope everyone watches this, you know, um, just to learn, just the, the, the nature where it came from, all this change, is that it's really, you know, I wrote down, you're, you're helping kids take ownership of their learning. You're building their resilience, you know? I have four different learners. And I've got one who does the formula, knows it, and has advanced and been able to enjoy things, you know, like the complex. And then I have two others that are like, eh, I'm out, you know, like how I kinda react to it. Um, so this is, I think it's just incredible work, so.
Well, and it's just teaching the kids. My grandson had a math problem not long ago, and he was doing it, and I was like, "How are you doing that?" He said, "I can do this problem five different ways." And he literally, he's in the third grade, and he showed me five different ways to solve this one problem. And I thought, "Gosh, that's just great," because if he doesn't get it, one, you know, he's got, he realizes there's options, not just, "I gotta know the formula."
Well, and that's a big step from where we went to school, because when we went to school, you had to show your work.
Exactly.
And you had to hit each step as you went through the problem. And so now, the end goal is the right answer. Doesn't matter how they got there, the end goal is the right answer. So I think this is, um, this is awesome.
So how does this translate? Uh, it's the one question I may not have asked you yet. How does this translate into middle school and high school?
I think it translates well. We have a K-12 mathematics advisory committee, uh, that we, uh, recently pres- presented this vision to, and we had discussions about overlap and differences. And the consensus in the room was that it's very, very, very similar. So, um, you know, that's one thing we're thinking about, is how do we, uh, possibly, you know, merge this into a, a, a consistent K-12 vision for, uh, teaching of mathematics? And like you guys said, teaching of really everything, right?
Yeah, 'cause it'd be a shame if they go revert back to a formulaic approach when they get out thinking differently, right? Get out of, out of K-5 thinking differently.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Great job.
And now it's that time of year, so we have, um, Larry Hamel and Dr. Bearden with the budget process.
Speaking of math, huh?
Speaking of math, that's right.
Do some magic, Larry.
Quit putting me after these great presentations, 'cause there's no way hell I'm gonna make up for that. I swear. I mean, budget is about as dull as you're gonna get, folks. All right. So I was asked to, uh, come up here today and just talk about the timelines for the budget process. One thing I do wanna say before we kinda dive into this a little bit is, this is a poshly time period we do it. Sometimes there's stuff that makes us have to delay or start something early, whatever. For example, in the current year, um, one of the big holdups I'm having right now with the salary-benefit projection going forward is, we don't know what the healthcare cost is yet. They've, they've said they're gonna change it, but they haven't officially given us a dollar amount yet. So where I'm kinda just sitting here waiting for that dollar number to be released, so I can start pulling that data and start calculating all the calculations to get to it. Um, but let's just dive into it. So, um, typically, we try to start in November, December. And now what we do is we open the budget entry, excuse me, the next-year budget module. And we, we, we set it up, we call it next year's budget, we put everything out there. And what it is, is basically it's a blank slate every year, zero, zero-based budgeting. And it has all the data from the previous year in terms of what they had, were, were asking for in terms of the language and stuff. There's no dollar amounts. And typically, what we look at is when we're sitting down with the departments going over it with them, and we'll get a little bit more on that later on, is we're asking them to rebuild their budget from scratch every year, because there's, there will be things that are annual things that are always added in there, uh, that's like software cost or something like that. But there may be something unique for that year they're asking for. There may be something they're no longer using, it comes off. So that's why we use zero-based budgeting. It's just for that particular reason, that reason only. Um, then in January, March period is when we're really taking a lot of, um, getting a lot of emails from different organizations that are telling us what's going on at the state level in terms of what bills are affecting us, in terms of, for example, this year, the, uh, governor came out with his, uh, State of the Union speech, and he talked about the two-thousand dollars for teachers. And he was talking about, uh, possibly some money from other people as well. Uh, one of the things in the budget is a thousand-dollar, kinda like, I almost wanna call it a bonus, for custodial people. That's gonna be paid directly from the state to custodial people. So there's some things like that we have to look at when we're looking at the budget process. And Jeff and I talk a lot about this as it goes along, and how it might cause us to have changes in what we look at. Uh, in February, we put the deadline for the departments to have their budgets done. So mid-February, the budgets, um, are usually done, uncontacted by the departments. And during that February, March period is when we're having the meetings. Um, so, for example, Matt might come down, and we might spend an hour, two hours going through his budget, because there's some big-ticket items in that budget, and it doesn't take as long to look at. But IT might come down, or, uh, teaching and learning might come down, or sped might come down, and it's a little bit longer. There's more activity. We're going line by line. They might have, like, professional learning, but they may have fifteen, twenty, thirty lines of activity. They're telling us what they wanna buy, or what they're looking for to spend the money. And I have to spend time recognizing how that's a relationship to prior years, what they're asking for. And then we ask questions like, is what you're asking for going up in cost? Reason the cost? Have you gotten a quote? Things like that. Then in April, we get the school budgets in, and then we have to sit down and look at those, review those, and make sure what they're asking for is in line with what they've done in the past. February, mid-February, we're working with HR to get the initial allotment sheets, um, that are being distributed to human resources. At that same time, they're giving us allotment sheets, and we have to go into what we call the salary and benefit projection module. And we have to start adding and subtracting people based on how those allotment sheets look. That same time, central office people are going around with their wish lists as well. Sidney and I sit down with those departments, and we come up with that, what we think is a good list, and we bring it to Jeff for him to review. And then he makes comments on that, and we go back and forth on that. March, um, when we have people coming in, who are trying to put their stuff together and haven't had it before, we try to have some budget meetings for them to help them walk them through that process. May, we try to have the initial work session, um, for the presentation to you guys. Like I said, for this year, I, I'm waiting for some information, so it may not be that work session. It may have to be the regular meeting. We'll wait and see. Then in May-June time period, we have to go out and get comments from different budget departments. June, we start having talks with stakeholders. And then during that May-June-July period is when we have to go out to the public and have all the public meetings, on whether or not the, um, both for the board meet, the board presentation to the public, and also the military rollback presentation to the public. During this time period, we're also talking to the Department of Appraisers for the county to see what the tax digest looks like. We're waiting for those numbers to come in. Those numbers have been coming very slow this year. And then after we get done running all the ads through June and July, we eventually get to mid-July where we actually have the second and third meetings, and then adopt the budget afterwards. So in a nutshell, this is very broad, thirty-six-thousand-foot kind of looking. There's a lot of details to involve the day-to-day stuff. But we just wanna give you an idea what it looks like from beginning of the period to the end of the period. So the budget process starts about mid-November, and sometimes it really doesn't end in July, mid-July, unless something happens dramatically. There was two years ago, I think, where they had the, everything done and to us by the beginning of February. It was crazy how fast it was. And we got the budget done. In fact, I think at one point, I had the budget done by April that year, if I'm not mistaken. That was two years ago. And we were ready to present it. This year's, it's gonna take a little bit longer.
Yeah, I guess, that was gonna be my question. I guess I remember it being early, like, earlier than May, and then thinking, "Oh, well, if..." Was it April that you have your departmental kinda short up, or now the budget?
Well, the, the salary, excuse me, the operation budget is pretty much done, about ninety-nine percent. There's some small changes going on where people come to me and say, "Hey, we finally got that quote for this software. It's gonna cost a little bit more," or things like that. That's pretty much done. All those meetings are done. What I'm waiting to do now is the salary and benefit projection, which typically is about eighty-nine percent of the budget. So it's the biggest chunk. The hardest chunk is sitting down with all the departments and going over what the request versus what we can and can't do.
Okay.
So that part's done.
Okay.
Larry, regarding the question about whether the state was gonna pick up the increased premium costs, did we ever, did they ever pick that up?
Um, don't know yet, so we're still waiting to get information. What we've heard is they're gonna delay the onset versus picking up the cost, is what we've heard. So we still haven't gotten the final information on that yet. And in fact, I've reached out to two sources I have high up in the G2E, and they're in the black. They don't know either.
You have a question?
Anybody else?
Just wanted to put it out there, you know, not just for the board, for the public as well, to understand, you know, where we are in the process. And we are hopeful by May, we can present a tentative budget proposal to the board. And as you guys know, once that happens, you'll get a notebook with all the details. And then as you need to come in and meet with Larry or myself or other department heads around justification rationale, we'll make ourselves available for you during that process.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have the GSBA legislated positions.
Yeah, you have a copy of that, uh, online, and you should have a hard copy as well. And so, uh, the GSBA every year asks for, uh, boards of education throughout the state of Georgia to take a look at these, and if you have any recommendations, uh, for the assembly that will meet in Savannah in June, uh, to let us know what those are. If you're, if you're prepared to do that tonight, we can certainly talk about it. But if you need time to go through this, that's okay as well. But if you have recommendations, you can just let, uh, Mina or Suzie know, and we'll let GSBA know what you're thinking as you have gone through, um, their positions. It's a pretty lengthy document. Well, they need to have it, uh, they have their meeting in April. I'm not sure exactly the date, find out. So we need to know pretty soon if you have any recommended, um, additions or changes or modifications. But I don't know if you have any comments now, based on what you've seen yet. Okay.
No.
Let us know.
Okay. Okay, now we have Policy IFBD Media Centers with Mr. Mike Evans.
As Dr. Lack was talking, and I was hearing key words such as explicit instruction and novel study, and thinking, "Well, this is a great lead-in to what we're gonna be talking about here." Thinking, let me move this back here a little bit. So one of the things that that we wanted to do after we went through this last Media Center book appeal, which was underneath the IFBD policy, was revise the policy. Actually, can I take a look at the entire structure of it? Because one of the things we realized was that it needed to be updated, it needed to be overhauled based on the expectations of it. And so what I'm gonna be sharing with you today are the updates to the, it's not a policy, this is one of the administrative procedures, so this is part of the regulation. So there's nothing to vote on here, but this is always gonna be work in progress. So as there, as there are things that you see as a board, we'll work with our team, our legal team as well, to make revisions as needed. But today, I'm just gonna go over, highlight some of the key points that we've changed. There were a lot of logistical, grammatical changes that we put in there, but we highlighted several key areas for you that we'll just focus on. Again, this is for the policy IFBD, which is for Media Center materials. There's also the IKBC, which is harmful to minors, we have the divisive concepts. We also have the instructional materials type challenge as well. So this one is just gonna be focusing on the IFBD for the media centers. So the first thing I just wanna point out, one of the key changes that we did at the very top was the district media specialist normally would facilitate the district media committee. What we did was we changed the premise of that to be more so of a facilitator instead of a voting member of that committee. That way, no worry about bias, they can have more direct dialogue along those as well. Down at the bottom of it, what you're gonna see in several key areas is the changing of the word, or the insertion of the word "may" in "shall." And I'll point out a couple of things here. So one of the things that the original wording focused on was that the books in the media center shall do X, Y, and Z, focusing on standards, focusing on the strategic plan of the district. Well, when this procedure was originally written, it was for Media Center books as well as instructional material in the classroom. We separated those out a year or so ago, but this never got updated to revise to focus on the actual intent of the media center. So I think that's where some of the confusion came in with the challenge that we just came through as well. So what you'll see throughout here in several different key areas is the language, so materials may also enrich the curriculum by balancing culture, history activities as well. So on the second page, again, I highlighted a couple areas where it talks about the shall. So when you're looking at the selection of materials for the media center, they shall, or they should meet individual instructional, social, emotional needs for the student population, age-appropriate sophistication of the grade level. And this is where we have the variation. So consideration may be given to whether they support the curriculum standards, exhibit a high degree of user appeal, provide a global perspective to promote diversity. Not all books, the way it was before, was that every book should, and that's not the case. Does that make sense? The section, the larger section down here underneath eight, we added some language in here that talked about the weeding process. The weeding process is an ongoing process that should be taking place throughout the year, there's more of an emphasis as the year is winding down. But Lisa Newberry, our district media specialist, she works really well with our district media specialists throughout the whole year, and they, they're constantly looking at the selection of the books to find out, are there books that have low circulation numbers? Are there books that are relevant or outdated as well? Yeah, go right ahead.
So the, the low circulation, how often is that done? Because there was that one book that everyone was, had, you know, thought was, well, I forget what it was, if it was or was not explicit. But it turned out it was checked out one time in like five years or six years. What is this circulation cycle that you look at to then pull a book?
So if you were to take a look at, what they will normally do is they'll run a, they'll run a report, and Lisa can provide more clarification on this. They'll run a report to take a look at the circulation numbers. Well, if we were to remove every book that had low circulation numbers, the media centers would unfortunately would be pretty empty. So at that point, then they're gonna take a look, they don't wanna, they'll look at a variety of different books to remove for subject area content and things like that. So it's a mixture of things, that's probably how, you know, some books have stayed in there and have not been removed if they've been in there for a long time. So it's kind of a variation, there's, there's quite a bit of variables that would come into play for that, too. On this one, number six at the top, so what we did is we added the language in here to align with the policy IKBC, so that, that a challenge that comes through for a media material must be for, from a parent whose child attends that school. So in other words, a parent or guardian cannot challenge material at another school where their child does not attend. This is to align with the IKBC policy, which is from the state law. Number eleven, we added, just so we had something in there to identify the fact that when the challenge comes through, since these are all employees that are working on the committees, that there are variations from the working calendars come into play. So if there's thirty days for it, if it's coming in right before Christmas break, well, all of a sudden, they're losing two weeks of time. So that workdays would actually be based on the calendar, so that they would still have the full time to work on it. Down here at the bottom, again, this is another one where it's separating out, so this is where the committee members, when they're looking at a challenge that may have come through, this is a separation, the top A, B, and C, these are the areas where books should be aligned to. And then D, E, and F, they may be aligned to that. Again, that, that variation of the standards, global perspective, and the appeal of interest to the users as well. This will be repeated again a little bit.
Real quick on that, is there a source that you use for B, like A and B? Where it talks about suitable for age and grade?
No.
What source do you use to determine?
No, so when they're looking at that, a lot of the times, the book recommendations, they'll, they'll buy their books from the catalog through, through follet. They usually come with age recommendations or grade ranges that come with that. So that's kind of what they're basing it on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I know that there's just so many different sources out there, and so like if, you know, how are they determining that? Are they looking at what it was suitable on, you know, Amazon? Or are they looking at what the age appropriate is for the publisher, you know, things along those lines? I think that's a good thing to define, because, you know, how are they making this decision?
Yeah, and I'll, actually, I'll touch on the Amazon thing in a minute, too. But even again, from that standpoint of, from sophistication, I mean, you know, as well as I do, we might have, from, from middle school, you have sixth grade through eighth grade, but you have some very immature sixth graders, but you also have some very mature eighth graders from a reading level and a cognitive level as well. All right, so. So top one here, we actually added this one, this was something that we had added recently, also one of the recommendations from one of the emails that we received from a parent recently. We already did this, so this is when, I'm sorry, let me look to make sure I know which committee we're on. All right, this is at the district media committee level. This top level one underneath number four, we just added in here that committee members, there would be notes taken during that discussion as well. That was in the local media committee. Items here in the procedures, but it was not underneath the district media committee, though they always do take notes. We wanted to put it in here as well from a writing perspective. And those are, would be available for the parent as well if they requested a copy of that, too. Again, the script's right down below, that's again, a kind of a breakdown of the shall and the may components that we spoke about a bit ago. Formal appeal to the Board of Education, we made a slight change here. Instead of the complaint appeal coming to the Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, it actually is coming to the district media specialist. Again, that was in there originally when the instructional component was through this. And our district media specialist, Lisa, is the one who puts together the entire packet as well. So basically, she would hand it to Leanne, and Leanne would just hand it to you. So basically, we're taking that out, and then Lisa would be that point of contact for you, because she knows the procedures inside and out. Down below here at the very bottom, this is where we, we added the clarification about the board's role, that you're gonna be looking at it really to make sure that the processes at the, at the local and the district committees were followed, and that the procedures were followed along those lines. So that's the gap, the piece that we're missing previously, and I think that caused some confusion also. I may have skipped over one of the points in here, but that was really when we were talking about. Okay, actually, this is right here, underneath additional sources. So when they're selecting materials for the media center, previously, we've, media specialists would look at professional reviews, and I think that's how a lot of books, you know, ended up in the, in the media centers. Well, that's how all the books ended up in there. But, but Lisa's been working with the media specialists currently to make sure that when they're looking at materials to bring in, that they're looking at alternate sources. It might be that they're looking at Amazon, it might be that looking at Common Sense Media or Goodreads, or a whole bunch of different things. Because what we found was that the professional reviews didn't quite go into all the specific details that a parent would if they're posting a review online about it as well. So, so the media specialists are being very, much more vigilant now about doing research about the type of content and the type of books that are, that are brought into the schools, too. So that was one variation that we wanted to make sure that, to point out, that, that they are being vigilant about the content that's coming in. And as resources are coming in, as books are coming in, or at least being made aware, we've got the review process in place. But also, if a media specialist comes across a book at this point right now, that they might, if it hasn't been addressed or brought up, they have the discretion, because they're a certified media specialist, to go ahead and remove that book. If they find that it doesn't meet the values of the school or the community. Not all the schools have a certified media specialist, so in that case, it would actually go to the local school media committee as well.
Will it be a common practice to cite the source? So if they look, go through the process and they look at it, and they're looking at additional sources, can they cite what those sources were?
That's a good question. Lisa, do you know, if you wanna come up here? I'm not sure exactly what the process is at the school level. Lisa was our district, she was our media specialist at South Forsyth High School, so she can probably talk about that process.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Lisa, nice to meet you.
Hi. That is something that we definitely could tell the media specialists that they need to do. I can tell you from having eight years' experience in a high school media center, especially one that did not have a parapro, that that would be a lot of extra, what I, I might consider busy work. Because if there was a challenge that came to me, I would be able to pull all of those sources. I can tell you, like, looking at Amazon, that's not a place that I would go for recommendations about the content of a book or why I would want it in my media center. That's only a place where I would go to see what parents had said about the book, to let me know if there was any content in it that I might not know about. But it wouldn't, it's not a professional resource, and it wouldn't be able to tell me standards that are covered or anything like that. But we are looking at all different resources, even words of mouth. When I hear somebody say, hey, have you read that book, it's really explicit, and I go look in the catalog and see that we have it, then that's a conversation we have at our meetings, we're being very vigilant.
I think citing the source would help us, because then we can say, hey, we're not using Amazon. These are the professional sources they're using, right? And it kinda shows why the decision was made, right? And it helps educate people why the decision was made, they're just not jumping to the gun, so I think it would be helpful.
How many books do you order at a time? It's not like you order ten?
That really depends on the individual media center.
Yeah.
I have worked in schools where I had $30,000 to spend on books every year, and I've worked in media centers where I only had three. We do have some media centers who don't have a budget for books. So they do all of their buying by fundraising. So that school might only purchase fifty books a year, whereas another school might purchase 2,000.
Which, so in that case, the one doing fifty, they could do the extra?
They could easily do it.
I'm just thinking about the citing, too, like, I understand where it's coming from.
I think even with our curriculum, the curriculum specialists cite the sources that it's coming from, so I don't know why we wouldn't do it for the books.
Well, yeah, I was just wondering.
If you were buying 2,000 books a year, it would be a lot of, of work, especially if you are also teaching the classes and watching the media center and doing instructional coaching.
But they have to evaluate those books anyways. They have to, they just can't go in and order 2,000 books, they have to look at each individual book, what they're ordering. So they can cite the source at the same time.
At one time, we could go in and just purchase some based on what was popular, what the kids were asking for. We're not doing that anymore.
Okay, so, yeah, that's what I, I had heard at one time, it was where you'd kinda buy in bulk, you kinda never know what you get. Not you never know what you get, but, because it's vetted from another source. But this is good, because now you can, you've got more.
And it has slowed down the process, I can tell you from personal experience, that I left money on the table and handed it back to my principal and said, I'm not handing this back to you because I don't want the money for books. I'm handing it back to you because I can't do as good of a job vetting these materials as I need to with the time I'm given. And she was very gracious in making sure that the next year I had the same amount of money. But that's always kind of a fear also, if you, if you don't spend your money, then they think you don't need it, and then they give it to teaching and learning, or someone. So. But they're very, very particular, and, and they're talking to each other all the time if they hear of a book that might not be appropriate, so that everyone can look at it. We're communicating a lot more than we did, say, a year and a half ago.
Yeah, and that, that's actually, I was gonna ask you that exact question. So we're gathering bits of information from the various schools that a title was flagged for being inappropriate or whatever. Are we centralizing that somehow, are we passing that around the different media centers? Because, I mean, if a book, the more egregious books, you know, probably wanna put everybody on notice.
Yeah, as soon as the challenge comes through, that all the other schools at that level, middle school or high school, they're notified as well. Just, and Lisa will go through the catalog and identify what, which schools have those books as well, just to give them a heads up as well. And depending on the timing of things as well, I think we had a parent that wanted to submit several books, I think five or six books at one of her high schools, but they were already, several of them were already identified as, as being weeded out. So they were in the process of reviewing them, they were already flagged for being weeded, too. So there are some things as well, there's, depending on the timing of how things unfold, there's a chance that things could get weeded. But it depends on whether a challenge has come through or not.
I have, I have a question more specific to the process. So when we're evaluating these three criteria that, that we say, you know, should meet age, sophistication, et cetera, are we looking at that based on a sixth grader in middle school and a ninth grader in high school, or is it all ages? How do we make that distinction? Because there's a huge difference between a sixth grader and an eighth grader. I've had two middle schoolers, so I can, I can, I can attest to that. And there's a big difference between a ninth grader and a senior, right? So when we're measuring it's appropriate for age and sophistication, is it based on the sixth and ninth grader? Because they all have access to it, right?
Right, what we have told the media specialists in, in the ten months that I've been here is to err on the side of moving up. So if it's appropriate for an eighth grader, but maybe not for a sixth grader, to maybe not purchase that book and leave that for the high school level. So you always wanna err on the side of caution when you're picking these books. The problem that we have is, especially in some of our older schools, there are books that are sitting on the shelves that maybe have been there for twenty years, and they're having to go through and look at all of those books. So it's not just selecting, it's weeding also. So there, there are books on the shelves now that maybe if they had done that process ten years ago, wouldn't be sitting there.
While I have your ear, can I say one, one other thing? Oh, I'm sorry, Lindsay, did you have a?
No, well, I, I was just, I needed clarification, I guess, from a couple of comments ago. And that if a book is challenged, the weeding process can't be done, correct? Like?
If it's officially challenged.
Okay, okay.
But that's kind of what I wanted to say to you. In, in the past, before this kind of became a hot issue topic, anytime I personally had a parent want to complain about a, a book, we sat down, had a conversation, and sometimes the book would be removed. I think that's a part that, that we have not been able to really join together with our stakeholders, is it just kinda jumps immediately to the challenges. But some of these conversations, if we could sit down and, and talk with one another, I don't want any sexually explicit materials in our media centers either.
So what's the impediment to that? Why, why are we jumping to an administrative?
Well, we're not jumping, we're getting the paperwork for the challenges.
Straight away?
Just straight away, without any conversations. So that, once that happens, we can't have the conversation.
Right, because legally, then, then you're bound by legal parameters, so you can't go back and do what makes common sense.
I mean, could we work through that for a second? So if, if a parent goes directly to filing a process or following a process, could we stop and say, hey, do you want to talk about it first? Can we meet first before we initiate this? Or as soon as we get it, we have to go through this process?
According to the law, you have to go through the process, right?
Well, that's an IKBC.
Right, yeah.
This is different. The one we're talking about now is a little different.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so IKBC is the harmful to minors aspect. IFBD, uh, it ranges, it's a whole range of concerns that a parent might, it might be from the, the book contains suicidal ideations, it might contain violence or excessive bullying, it might contain a variety of different pieces. So i- in this respect, I think what Lisa was alluding to is that if a parent comes and, and talks to media specialists about a specific book, um, then they can have that conversation, and then the, the media specialist could, has the discretion at that point. But, you know, i- it's tricky because of, um, the scope of it. And the, the media specialist does have the discretion, uh, at that point, um, but it gets kind of tricky in the area of now is the media specialist going to be hit up with 50, 100 books to come forward? And from a realistic standpoint, again, the media specialist has read a lot of books. I don't know if they have that capacity to, to fully look at it. But a- again, when we were talking about the smaller scale aspect, there's always that flexibility as well.
And I know I'm, I'm being kind of nitpicky here, but, so, since this is not the harmful to minors policy, then those conversations can still be had, right? Like, I remember four years ago, I brought a book to Haw Creek, you know, and I just said, hey, I, you know, my son's not very, you know, he brought it to me, he wasn't very comfortable. It was about, like, the moon and stuff. It wasn't anything explicit. But, um, and I just was like, you know, I don't know if this is an issue, but, you know, I'm bringing it to your attention, almost like just here, it, it's in your hands to make the decision, kind of thing. That could potentially still be done, right? Like, I don't, I didn't follow up to see what happened to the book, but.
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Having that conversation with the media specialist, having the conversation with the principal, everyone sitting down at the table, talking. I mean, if someone, there have been books that I've looked at that I thought if a parent brought that to me, flipping through the book, that might be one that I say, and, and there, there was one at South that I took off of the shelf a couple of years ago, that was brought to my attention, and I said, this should not be on our shelves, and I weeded it, um, as a media specialist. But that, that's tending to not happen now. We're just opening up our email, and then there's, there's the reconsideration request, which we've changed from challenge to call it reconsideration request, because challenge and complaints just had a negative connotation, and we wanted to start our conversations or anything that we had with the parents in a more of a positive light.
This will be, this is an ongoing process. And I can tell you myself, Lisa, Jason, we talk about this on a regular basis, and are always brainstorming different ideas and, and ways. And I think even in the email conversations that we're having right now, um, trying to find out, are there ways that we can improve the process? There's, there's tricky things and dynamics of what we can and can't do from a technical standpoint. I know that's hard coming from me, because I think you can, you can do a lot of things. But we have limitations in, um, in our library media catalog through Destiny of what, you know, certain things we can and can't do from putting restrictions on. Uh, again, having the parents reach out, we've got the email opportunity for the parents to receive the email notifications. Parents can also put an email or can connect with the media specialist if they have certain books that they do not want their child to read. They can put a note or a flag within the child's account. There are some restrictions in there where, um, uh, again, that, uh, it might not stop a child if the school's in, media center's in kiosk mode, where the kids doing, are doing self, self-checkout. But there's some other things that we can do to help restrict that book for a specific parent and a child, to help kind of hone in that parent-child relationship as well.
We've turned around the idea of making the media center notification universal and opt, opt out instead of opt in. Has, has any consideration been given to that, been given to that?
Well, we, we talked about that last year, uh, and, and really, that was just a, a lot, because you're getting an email every single day. It's a lot of emails that parents would be getting, um, and there's only a, a, you know, I'm not sure what the total number is, um, of parents that are receiving the emails right now. I, I think it might be 6,000 or so. But then you're going to be having, you know, 48,000 parents opting out of it, um, becau- and then they're constantly getting those emails. So the easy thing was that for the parents that are concerned, they can go ahead and opt in, and if they do have a specific current concern, then they're really addressing it for their child.
Thank you.
To be continued. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for all your work.
Okay, next we have Wes McCall with Homeless Youth Council update.
All right, we're going to start our presentation with a spelling bee.
Oh, God.
Oh, man.
No, no. Thank you for this opportunity to give you guys just a little bit of an update on the Homeless Youth Council. At this time, I'm going to invite Kim down. What we're going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit from the council aspect, and then I've invited Kim to talk about it from the school aspect, and so we will go right into it. So as you guys know, we started the Homeless Youth Council, and really, our purpose was not to create a new organization, but really to align all the great community leaders and organizations we already have in Forsyth County. Not one of them solely focuses on the homeless youth. They all have an aspect that works with the homeless youth. And so our, you know, mission was to align those resources. And so we started out with these five goals, and, uh, we accomplished all these goals in the first, uh, year. And so that has made us work on our pillars of priority. But before we get into the pillars of priority, I was going to let Kim talk a little bit about the McKitty Vento and the numbers and how that works with the school system.
So resilience, that's what I want to talk about tonight, resilience. The kids that I work with are some of the most resilient kids you will ever meet. First of all, let me go backwards to go forwards. The McKenna Vento homeless education program is an educational law that is federal, state, and local. Tons of fun navigating all that. It defines what homelessness means in the, it means in the educational context. There are three different agencies that actually define homelessness. One is HUD, that's the most restrictive. That has to do with families that you think are traditionally living in their cars, living in tents, or there's a shelter or some emergency agency paying temporarily for their hotel. The second is the runaway and homeless youth, and that has a medium restrictive, and that's for runaways, but most of our youth, they don't fall under the runaway category. That requires a DFAX report, and that's the antithesis of what the McKenna Vento program would say. So my role in the school system and the people that work with me are to identify homeless children and youth, to facilitate their enrollment, their attendance, and their academic success by removing barriers to full participation. That categorical eligibility for McKenna Vento has to do with FAR, fixed adequate and/or regular nighttime housing. It was formed under the Ronald Reagan administration during the Great Recession. And what was happening is that students were staying out of school for multiple months at a time because they didn't have the required documents to enroll in school. And so it lists four different categorical eligibilities. Students living in shelters, like family haven for domestic violence. Two, families that are doubled up due to economic hardship. What that means is that families can't afford housing on their own. We've seen an increase. It used to be, when I started this job almost eight years ago, that was 76% across the nation. It's more in the 80th percent to 83% now, because rent has just gone up, and families are working two and three jobs. The cost of food has gone up, the cost of gas has gone up, and people have lost their jobs and landlords have sold homes. So we're now not seeing doubled up, we're seeing tripled, we're seeing quadrupled, and this year, we're seeing contupled. A lot of families who are sharing, five families in a household, in a very small space. So as you can imagine, that's not really adequate space for anybody. The WHO defines anything under 174 square feet per person as being not adequate for enough mental health space, as well as enough breathing space, and just even there's the wear and tear. If you look at, um, the real estate definition on pipes, on plumbing, on everything inside of a house. So those families are qualifying under the McKenna Vento program. My, I have the honor of speaking with every single family that qualifies and going through a process of vetting them to ensure that they do fall under the McKenna Vento eligibility definition. The third is unsheltered. Unsheltered are the families who are living in their homes, I mean, sorry, in their cars for their homes, or they're living in a place that's not habitable. So it might be a condemned building. We had a family that bought a condemned house one time, and they were trying to repair it and live in it at the same time. We've had families with holes in the floor, they're as big as this podium right here, and it says, "Black mold, do not enter on the walls." So that's what we're talking about for unsheltered. We're also talking about families living in campgrounds, and there are different criteria around that. We also have families who stay in their home because they can't afford rent when the weather falls, and the tree falls in their trailer, and there are three families in there. So that's what we're talking about for unsheltered. And then the last one has to do with families living in hotels or motels due to economic hardship. I'm not talking about, oh, we're going to have our kitchen redone, and we're going to go stay in a hotel, and we're going to go clamping, you know? That is not what I'm talking about. It's families that are in the hotel cycle, which is very hard to break. Once you start living in a long-term stay hotel, it's hard to get out of it, and the cost of the hotels has gone up. I'm watching a trend, I've seen it happen two times this year, but other counties across the metro PLC, we have a PLC for liaisons, tons of fun. We get together, we get to have a Teams meeting, connect and collaborate, look at trends, problem solve, find solutions. But other counties are seeing that families can only afford three weeks out of four weeks in hotels right now, because hotel prices have gone up too. So those are the FAR, the fixed adequate and regular definitions, and that's the McKenna Vento Homeless Act. I want to show you the numbers. This is where we started out, almost eight years ago. Now, this is based on the FTE count numbers, it's not based on the data we keep. There's a discrepancy, and we've talked to the Georgia Department of Education about it. There are two different factors for discrepancies in numbers. One has to do with the fact that we don't count community-based education, preschool in our final FTE count, that's a GDO thing, that's not a local thing. And so you can see in 2016, 17, we had on the FTE 588. 2018, 19, we had 495 stu-, summer 17, 18, we had 495. That's the year that foster care rolled off of McKenna Vento. And then the next year, 18, 19, we bumped back to 625, it was more like 644. In 1920, uh, we had 599. Last year, we actually had 840, 884 students who qualified for the McKenna Vento program. That was our record to date. But this year, we've surpassed it. This year, we are already at, as of today, 967 students who've qualified. The office feels more like July and August than it does like April right now. And the number of crises walking through the door and the calls coming in require significant technical assistance. So in March, um, 2023, we had 941, and that's where you can see the categorical eligibilities for all of our students on that date. So you can see there are 39 students to date who've lived in shelters, 813 who were doubled up due to economic hardship, but not just doubled, remember, tripled, quadrupled, contupled, 17 in unsheltered, and 72 living in hotels or motels due to economic hardship. I can already tell you that data is out of date. And then we have unaccompanied homeless youth, okay? Unaccompanied means not in the nighttime presence of your legal parent or guardian. Homeless means you fall under that, not having a fixed adequate and/or regular nighttime housing. And youth has to do with any student who's still enrolled in the school system. That number was around 102 students on March 24th of 2023. It's currently higher. I was not able to pull that data prior to this presentation, but it is higher. So we have a lot of students who, due to economic hardship and so many different reasons, do not stay in their homes. Some of them are coming here without their parents with them, because their parents have mental health issues or other issues. Some of here are coming him, here from different countries. Some of them are coming here, and they're becoming unaccompanied homeless youth, they're actually already here, because there's domestic disputes, and it's not safe for them to stay in their home. And again, this isn't runaway, the parents aren't filing, you know, unruly on them. It is something where these youth are on their own. Some of them are sofa surfing, some of them are in more stable environments, but that's why we have a youth resiliency coach, six through 12. That's why we have a part-time student success coach, so that our families have extra layers of support and follow-up. Um, and that was really the catalyst for how the Homeless Youth Council came to be, because we were seeing these trends increase. And a lot of the safe aunts and uncles, kin and fictive kin, live in Forsyth County. So when things fall apart, they send kids to the safe aunt, uncle. Oftentimes, the crisis precipitated what's happening doesn't facilitate a means for temporary guardianship to be assigned. There's a cost barrier, there are ways around that, but there are oftentimes where a parent's under their own duress, and for whatever reason, they're afraid to sign any kind of paper to give guardianship or rights to. And so we're working with youth who sometimes have medical issues, who have other issues, and we're working on getting supports in place, and that takes time to build the capacity in. And so the McKenna Vento is helping while we're working to facilitate all the different needs of the unaccompanied homeless youth. Everything from my sofa surfers who are teenagers, to my younger community-based education who's, um, got a lot of different issues going on. So I will not go into too many weeds there, there's so much more I could talk about among this population, that's a whole presentation in and of itself. And the program support, so this is where resilience and hope comes in. All those things that we just talked about, that's my duty by law. Um, we have federally assigned duties. We also write logic models to be able to spend our grant funds. We have annual monitoring, woo-hoo! And McKenna Vento is the only program that gets annual monitoring by the state. We have needs assessments that we do. We're just finishing up our CNA season in federal programs. Well, that informs a McKenna Vento grant continuation. And so we do have a McKenna Vento grant that we apply for every three years. We're in year two of a three-year continuation right now. We also, I also work with connection wraparound supports and services to make sure our families have barriers removed. For example, one family that came in, uh, they had just arrived, and they only had a half a gallon of milk for nine people in the household. So the first thing we did along with removing the barriers to enrollment was, we have emergency food bags, and we were able to run to the place of Forsyth, because there were communication barriers due to no telephone, there were transportation barriers due to no, no transportation at all. And then I'd work in a case like that to make sure that the students have access to the bus on the first day of school, on that first morning. And then we're working with school staff to make sure that those students have somebody welcoming them at the bus, to make them feel welcome, to have a safe, supportive, thriving learning environment for them. So that's an example, and then we have comparable services. We have a number of students who came from Florida and other states who haven't been in school since 2019, 2020. And they also have special needs, and they might have been somewhere around five years old when things first happened, and they were never in school. So we're working across federal programs and across other departments within our LEA to make sure that students have what they need to be able to start on the first day, and be in the least restrictive learning environment, and have the supportive resources that they need. Grant-funded activities, so we have McKenna Vento tutoring through the grant. I got the most amazing email today from a middle school counselor, saying what a difference tutoring had made for the students at her school, and how that tutor just worked wonders, navigating the needs of the students, not just understanding their academic needs, but understanding the whole child of what's going on, and meeting with them, and her flexibility and pivotability to adjust to that rolling schedule in middle schools. I mentioned before, we have an MV support coach. That is an ARP EHCY-funded position. Remember the CARES-ASR funds? As we're rolling out. That position is funded through that. We are applying for an extension through the MV grant this year. We did receive notification that grant amount is being raised for a one-year allocation, so we will apply for the full amount of that. We also have a part-time student success coach. Her role is CBE, community-based education through fifth grade, connecting with the families, working on parent and family engagement material, resource, support, and it's just a catch-all job. And it's making sure that our parents don't fall through the cracks. She does an amazing job making sure that families are called and connected and cared for, be it through telephone calls, messages, and emails. And our families respond, and there are times where like, hey, you didn't call me! Because they know there's a cycle and pattern for calls. Hey, you missed a call! And they really rely on that support. We also assist with graduation fees and course fees. We also help with, um, training, so we go to trainings, and we're able to then go back and share that with the school system, all the updates, and where we're at in the interpretation of the McKenna Vento law, and any changes that are rolling out. And then we help with school supplies. You know, this is the first year, we have given out more backpacks and school supplies than ever before. We have given out more backpacks and school supplies than ever before. One mom said, "Have you looked at how much a pack of pens is cost nowadays? I sure do need those school supplies. Man, I can barely keep food on the table." So that has been a higher need in our community, and we've had great partnerships with the place of Forsyth and with United Way to be able to restock as well as some of our funds that are allocated towards this. And then going ahead and getting those parent and family engagement materials. Unfortunately, we have recruited a lot of tutors, but we had a tutor shortage this year. And so those parent and family engagement materials are something that we're filling in some of those gaps with. We also have, again, I'm going to talk about the MV student support. She does resiliency coaching. It's actually over two hundred and ninety students now. She meets with them on a monthly basis. She is an MSW. She's trained specifically to deal with trauma and resilience. All three staff members, um, our student success coach and our MV support and myself were able to get trained by a certified coach in trauma and resilience earlier this year before the year rolled out. And then she does a whole child academic review. There's a lot that you can learn by meeting with students, and there's a lot you can learn in all of our data that we have in IC. And so before she meets, connects, or calls a student, she's checking to see what the whole picture is. What's the absenteeism rate looking like? What does that pattern tell me? What are the behaviors going on? Is there any ISS that happened? Is there any OSS that's happened? Because that helps her navigate the coaching to have that self-directed, okay, what, you know, tell me about what's going on. And so that's where we find out a lot of the transitions that are happening. One of the other things that I did not mention before with these doubled up situations is you can imagine when there are five families in a home, it leads to a fast turnover. That doubled up part, the welcome mat wears out really fast. Historically, our families move sometime around fall break, winter break, and then tax season when the money came in, and then again in May. Those are the typical roles with the doubled up, and that's why McKenty Vento exists, to help with school stability during all that. This year, we're seeing rolls happen every couple of weeks. It's put an increased demand on our transportation requests and working with transportation. And that is where the student success coach is also calling students if they're not there during a coaching time to connect with the families. If she has a work, she has a worksell, and if she has a student number to check in and say, hey, what's going on? I see you're not in school today, everything okay? And so that's that caring touch point to stay connected with students who are going through different situations. She also is helping and taking on the health department voucher distribution. So as soon as families come in and qualify, if they do not have all the needed immunizations or the thirty-two, thirty-one, and the thirty-three hundred form, we have an agreement with the health department. We're so thankful for it, where our MV families can take a voucher and they're not charged. And so this year, school nurses have a platform where they can put in a request that's secure, and she's able to distribute those out and follow up to school nurses so that we don't have any barriers. Because remember, we have immediate enrollment, but some of our families have not followed through in a timely manner, and that's a gap that we identified. So we're working on making sure that those immunizations are attained in a timely manner. And then the MV student success coach, again, she calls parents CBE through fifth grade, works with parent and family engagement, wraparound supports. There is such a need for those wraparound supports. It's filling in the holes and the gaps so our families don't fall between the cracks because they oftentimes want to remain invisible. And then the monthly support themes, we have different months that we focus on different areas. And so right now, it's preparing for summer. We just had a backwards design parent and family engagement recording that we did that will go out. And then we will share the different links for low-cost, no-cost summer activities and vouchers as, um, to different summer activities as well as the summer brain drain and stopping that from happening and including different academic supports in that K through twelve continuum. And so we didn't have a high attendance. We were discouraged by that when we first did this. But then we found out we had seventy-two clicks in the links that were sent out. So that told us something, and we started thinking about backwards design. So we're continuing those videos and those links to get them out to parents and to share with them resources in a manner that's supportive of the specific needs of this population. And then she also helps with the whole child academic review. She also helps with tutoring referrals. And then we have the internal collaborations within our school system with administrators, transportation, school social workers, school counselors, data clerks, federal programs, district staff. The MV office is housed in registrations, so that immediate enrollment piece. Again, we had eleven students that we had walked through the office today, different families with different needs. We had nine new qualifications. All right, today, the problem. We have a growing number of homeless children and youth. The strategies were providing services through the McKenty Vento program and supportive resources. We're in collaboration with school staff and CBOs, community-based organizations. It's needs assessment season, and it's MV grant continuation. We're using all this information to inform that. The risk is frequent moves, which lead to academic gaps, truancy, students that drop out due to the academic gaps, and unaccompanied homeless youth. Tomorrow, the solutions is we're looking at the Homeless Youth Council, community stakeholder collaboration to fill in those holes. Because we can't do it alone, but together we can do a lot, and we can fill in these holes. So we're looking at solution-minded resolutions to these challenges that we're facing. The progress we're making is we do have support staff in place through the MV support coach, who's an MSW, and through the student success coach, along with the McKenty Vento program. The wins are student success, community collaboration, and supports in place that address the different pockets of need among the identified different needs in McKenty Vento families. And now Wes is going to talk about the pillars and priorities.
Yep. I'm going to go back here just for a second, and I want to share with you a couple of data points that I personally have looked at over the last couple of years. And this is my personal thought, but it's also why I passionately support the student support for the McKenty Vento students. If you look at the unsheltered number, it's seventeen. You know, that should be zero. And actually, I think during COVID, it was at zero. And so that's very important. But one of the things that they brought up to me was you have things like the students who are sheltered in a program or the ones that are doubling up. They have, they face different challenges than the ones that are unsheltered or what my son has ever faced. And that just opened my eyes to show, wow, you know what? They are dealing with a lot of things that we don't know how they're dealing with it. One of the things that Sarah and her staff that I hear frequently is, you know, the, the hour of the week is Friday at four o'clock. These kids are trying to figure out, they're out of school. What are they going to do for the weekend? Where are they staying for the weekend? How are they going to get back to school on Monday morning? So those are very important for you guys to, just to look at and why the mentoring and the coaching is suitable for them because it takes them to that next level and helps them because they're dealing with certain things. In my mind, I was really worried about the unsheltered, they got to have shelter. But in reality, they all face struggles and why the coaching has worked so well. The other data point, and we didn't share it here, but if you look at the absenteeism rate for the McKenty Vento students, McKenty Vento students in Forsyth County miss about thirty percent of school in a, in a year, right? To us, that's significantly high. That's a lot, right? Thirty percent of the time out of the schools, a lot. But you start comparing it to surrounding counties, and it's seventy, the seventy-five percent they're missing. That's just a testimony to Kim and Sarah and her staff that they're investing in these students, so these kids want to come to school. Even though it's a struggle, they, they're trying to figure out where they're going to stay, where they're going to eat, what they're going to eat, things along those lines. They know they want to come to school. And so we need to support the, the McKenty Vento student support and just show that because the work is being done and it's being successful helping these kids. I wanted to share that. And just real quick, so our pillars of priorities, a continuum of care. We got together as a group, and we wanted a asset map to show, okay, you come in contact with a homeless youth person, where can you go to get help? And I'll show that to you in a minute because we completed that. Data collection, we need a source of truth. As Kim explained a little bit with the data, there's no consistent way of collecting this data, but we all know data drives the bigger picture, right? So we need to have that collection. So one of the things we did, we did a data roundtable, and we invited other districts around to find out how they're collecting data. And I think it was pretty clear the first ten minutes of the meeting. Nobody was consistent. Nobody had a really good way to collect this data. And then we spent the other fifty minutes them asking Kim how she does all these great programs and how she can help them. And so we kind of learned that we need to come up with our own. So as a group, we decided that the McKenty Vento numbers that we just showed you are the way we're going to collect the data, the way we're going to tell the picture and the needs going forward. Communication, this bringing this group together has been huge. Everybody's communicating from the chamber, from the nonprofits, from the churches. And it doesn't even happen during the meeting, but before the meeting, even our last meeting last week, um, the school system and the place of Forsyth, we're talking about something, and the place Forsyth's like, well, we have a lady that does that, and they made the connection. So I don't know how many families have been helped just because of the communication piece of bringing everybody to the table, but I know it's been beneficial for them. The next steps, and so we completed those three. The next steps, you know, they're ongoing, they're in progress. The shelter, having a consistent data collection now to paint the bigger picture. We can start having the complicated discussion of a shelter, what that looks like. We have so many great resources outside the school system that can come together. It's a community. So we're going to start looking at that. And then legislation, last year in May, we started working with the legislators, looking at legislative review, talking to our, our local legislators about the issues and what we can do to come together. And that even includes county commissioners. We've had that conversation, the conversation with the sheriff. And so we're just going to continue that in progress. Real quick, I'm going to show you just real quick the asset mapping. This is kind of what we came up with. So if you have a homeless youth and you come up with somebody and they need a health and wellness, these are all of our partners that they can go to that we can provide assistance to. Fooding, food and clothing, shelter, the school resources, and then our community resources. And so we're going to try to find a way to get this out there so that when Darla's playing tennis with somebody and they say, hey, we found somebody that, you know, might need help, then she can say, hey, we have an asset map. Let's go to it, look at it, and say, okay, what is the need? Here's who we can call and get that out there. So we're working on getting this out to the public. And then moving forward, one of the things we're working on is our foster homes. We want to increase the foster homes and the respite homes in Forsyth County. The reason this is important, about a year ago, we had about forty-nine that were registered with DFAX, it has declined greatly. I had the number written down, but I remember shocked saying, oh my, it just went down. So we need to really increase that, and we're going to work on a way to do that. Why is that important? Because right now, if a student is placed in a foster home and there's not one in Forsyth County, there's-
Twelve active.
Twelve active.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, just to add on that, is that we were never even where we should, or we-
Yeah, yeah, sure, we've never been, no, right.
So to decline-
To twelve.
Pre-COVID, we had, and this is Erin Cooper's role, so I don't want to step into her lane, but we had over seventy families that were active. We currently have twelve active foster families. So recruiting more and providing respite homes has become a priority and merged into the Homeless Youth Council's pillars of priority.
Why do you think that is?
It's post-COVID.
It's hard.
Um, things have just changed, and it seems like families just haven't come in. There may be more that are qualified, but they're not actively taking in students and children.
Which means that these students are now have to go to a family that might be in Cobb County or DeKalb County, which takes them out of their element, right? They're, they have their own element in their schools, their own friends, things like that. We just remove them. So one of the things we're going to work on moving forward is finding ways to do that. We are very fortunate, we have several organizations in Forsyth County. And you might do the terminology. You have, obviously, you have the DFAX ones that are funded, and then there's, what's the private organization ones? Yeah, there's a name for it, but the private organizations can do that. So we're going to work with both and bring them together so that we can figure out how we can increase the foster homes. Data collection, we have found that we just got to now have a baseline and move forward to start collecting this data so we can see the trends. And then based on these trends, we'll work on, you know, the shelters and making the next steps.
And I want to talk, may I say something about data collection? So right now, there is some regional collaboration. We have a state person who's in charge of asset mapping across the state, and it's led to some cross-sector intersections.